We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Blair will lead us in the pledge.
To fireheads, dear heavenly father, thank you for the friends, colleagues, and neighbors gathered in this room today. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us, and thank you for the opportunity to make a positive impact on our community here tonight. God, as we attempt to do this good work, please give us the wisdom, courage, and empathy necessary to accomplish it. And most importantly, may your will be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's say a pledge together, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Christman.
Here. Mr. Lynch, I believe you have a couple of young ladies back there that.
I do. I have two students here from my classes. You want, ladies, introduce yourselves. I see you want to start. Stand up and tell them who you are.
Racine Grimm.
Okay, Racine Grimm and Rosa Rosalyn, that likes to be Rosa, Houston, and they're in my class. And they're getting some points today, and I'm enjoying having them here. Ladies, I just want to mention to you, normally when we're not in COVID times, those three council members are up here. They haven't been bad. Normally, everybody's up here. You wouldn't be looking at their backs. You would be looking at them up here, but they're separated because of COVID things. But anyway, other than that, I'm glad you're here. Racine and Rosa.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, when I was in school, those were called, uh, brownie points. They still call them that.
They have brownie points.
Uh, what, what they show up?
Yeah.
It's called twenty-five extra credit.
Oh, okay.
It's called these things.
Oh, good. Glad to see you, ladies. Okay, next is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting held September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I have to make a remark here. I appreciate them putting my name in here, but I was not here at that meeting. That was the twenty-second, which was Wednesday, and I was not here. So wherever my name shows up, you can strike it out of there.
That being taken care of, I'd make a motion to accept. Twenty-second meeting.
Beckett.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
I'll abstain from that one.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes. Next is the minutes of the special council meeting held September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Abstain.
Christman.
Yes. Last but not least, special count, council meeting held September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings from September, many, meeting minutes from September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Easy for you to say. I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Abstain.
Christman.
Yes. Moving into the business session, Mr. Denon, communications.
None.
Thank you. The reporter council committee will start with Ms. Hernandez on the Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee.
Economic strategy, strategies and cooperation committee meeting met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at five P. M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council chairperson, Mr. Dale Lynch, council member, and Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Tom Riley, finance director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, Mr. Joseph Devon, city manager. Looks like we're missing some people from that, FYI. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. Number two, the committee noted the status of various development and expansion projects within the community and downtown area. Number three, the administration advised the committee of the success of the chocolate walk shop hop and second Saturday event held by Tyler Kelly, downtown miss, business owner. Number four, the committee noted the progression of the creation of the designated outdoor refreshment area, or also referred to as DORA. Number five, the committee noted projects and business growth in the downtown area. The committee noted that new business blocks were distributed to Zypos LLC as well as Oh, Oh, hey, I never comprehend this. Ohio Hibachi, is that right? Ohio Hibachi? Number six, the committee noted progression with the opening of hippie hot dogs. Number seven, the committee expressed excitement with the downtown mural dedication and especially noted Kyger and Kyger Law Office for allowing the mural to be placed at their location. Number eight, the administration advised the committee of the success of the Blue Lion Innovation Center at the Washington City Schools. The administration expressed their appreciation of the Washington Middle School for giving the kids another career avenue to review. Number nine, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Respectfully submitted myself and Ms. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, since I was in Washington, D. C. that day, and I, well, I lived that day at night, I wasn't here at that meeting. Could you explain a bit more about the committee noted the progression of the creation of a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA? I, I was under the understanding, DORA, we had to have a certain population to get involved in that?
You got more than one district that exists there for different purposes. The DORA would expedite or make easier uh, when you had a downtown event, and within the DORA district, you have to have at least four valid permit holders. What happens is the request is made to the city, then uh, we would advertise in a newspaper of general circulation for thirty days. We do not do anything, but after that thirty days is passed, you have sixty or ninety days in which council would have to act on the question. So we would present council with a piece of legislation and uh, within that time period, you need to vote the question up or down. If you voted up, then we file that with the state of Ohio, and you would create a district in which you would be able to an designated dates and times, uh, like when you have a shop hop, for example. If somebody walked outside on the sidewalk from a licensed premise that it, it's in the appropriate container, that that would not be a violation of law.
From what block to what block would the DORA cover? Any idea, or we would have to discuss that in a future meeting?
Uh, we have put together a map that we believe satisfies the requirements of the law. So therefore, once a request is made to us, we would present map and, and DORA plan to council with the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, I believe I was uh, in attendance extra, on that extra insight on the DORA also. The reason that it's been changed in accordance with uh, COVID. I spoke with, uh, I spoke with Representative Mark Johnson about it. And he had indicated that yes, among uh, some of the changes with COVID, obviously it is better to have people outside. So they, that was part of that package deal that they created, uh, which allowed, which other small community recently got it?
Circleville.
Circleville.
Okay. Because I thought we had a discussion earlier.
Yes.
Right, that there was, we had to have a certain population.
Previously, you had to have fifty thousand people.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now they've changed.
Now there's a category for thirty-five thousand or less.
Okay.
But in the district you create, you have to have four valid permit holders.
Okay.
From the inception.
Would we have, you would be one, of course.
The map that we've made encompasses four.
Okay, we'll look at that. And I think there probably is four in that. Court Street area, give or take, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. No, I like the idea.
Who, who else was in this meeting that we're missing? I felt like there were more than this.
We'll look at the attendance and correct that.
Okay.
But.
We're not voting on this tonight.
No.
No.
No, I'm just asking.
No, what will occur, um, or what, that sequence of events Ted is we get requests, we advertise that the request has been filed. Then uh, we would bring to council legislation to create the district uh, with the supporting materials for that, and council votes it up and down, that point, Tom.
Okay. Because a long way is all. Yes, it's a long way, yes. It's a lot of discussion, a lot.
Discussion, yeah.
Okay, absolutely. Since I wasn't here, I can't approve these minutes, so.
Right.
Somebody else.
Any other questions or comments on this before you roll?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Abstain.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Abstain.
Christman.
Yes. Mr. Lynch, finance and personnel meeting, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
The finance and personnel committee met in the city council chambers, one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at six P. M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council chairperson, Mr. Tom Riley, finance director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Devon, city manager. The committee benefited from review of the statement of cash for the month ending in August. Mr. Riley noted strong income tax performance. The committee benefited from review of investments in the city of Washington courthouse. The administration advised the committee of bond closure, noting the actions would produce a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar savings over a ten-year period. The committee noted the city of Washington courthouse received the Honorable State Award for twenty twenty, which I think you told me was like the eighteenth year in a row or something.
At least, yeah.
The committee benefited from review of personnel issues. The administration advised the committee that there would be a zero percent increase in the healthcare rates for the twenty twenty-two year.
That's fantastic.
The committee benefited from review regarding human resource services. The committee discussed the question of COVID bonuses for employees. The committee, the committee's desire being to provide a five hundred dollar bonus to all employees in a manner compatible with the American Rescue Plan. The committee recommended that the administration issue eight hours of annual leave to every employee to honor the twenty twenty-one June teenth, teenth, federal holiday. The committee noted the Juneteenth will be honored on the actual date of the federal holiday in twenty twenty-two. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council to transfer approximately three point three acres of property from the city of Washington courthouse to the Fayette County Regional Humane Society. The committee recommended the legislation be brought to council to replace a nineteen eighty-six boot truck for, for the service department in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand dollars. The committee noted the importance of a boot truck to pull pumps from sewer lift station. And the committee reviewed, reviewed Zoom-style council meetings. The committee recommended that council meetings continue to be out in person in the council chambers. However, council desires, desires that a Zoom meeting be developed. That's submitted by myself, as chairperson, finance and personnel, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on Mr. Lynch's report?
On number six, could you review that? Just briefly, what your review was?
Uh, we talked about the human resource services that we contract out Ted.
Is it going well or?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Abstain.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk. Christman.
Yes. Thank you, Kendra. Thank you, Dale, for those couple of students.
Give me the hat. Okay, I got two more.
Oh, you did a board.
They snuck in for it. Matt Mead and Maya. Matt Mead and Maya, stand up for a second. Tell them who you are. Matt Mead, you start.
Um, my name is Nomi Carr. I'm a student of government. And I'm, uh, I'm a junior. I'm kind of embarrassed because I've never done this before.
That's okay, you're fine.
Hi, I'm Maya. I'm a junior, and I'm taking Mr. Lynch's C C P government class, so we came to watch.
And I'm glad you're here. I was reading, and I didn't see you come.
Thank you. Welcome, ladies. Now, Mr. Lynch, you don't deduct anything from their points closer to fifteen minutes later.
No, I will not deduct points. I'm just glad they won.
I want to clear that up before you talk. Thank you. Reports of city officials, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Denon.
Thank you.
You can actually understand. Wanted to review the night ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Job creation incentive with the Plastalini company. We are very pleased that Plastalini will be occupying the Rock Ten Building in the industrial park. The legislation allows us to sign an agreement in which Plastalini creates fifty-eight full-time equivalent employee positions with an average payroll of approximately sixty thousand dollars per year. You have a nice range of jobs there. The way that this mechanically works, it's based on the income tax revenue due to the city. So the way you calculate the job incentive for the first five years is one hundred percent of those revenues that would be due us, but that does not include property taxes or any income taxes to Washington City Schools. And in the second five years, it falls to fifty percent, and then uh, there is no incentive after that ten-year period. In the, we've done this in the past. Last time would have been with WCH molding. For us, it's a lot easier than per se a property tax-based incentive. Sometimes that can be more difficult and complicated. It can have a bigger effect on the school district that can be negative. Here, with an existing facility that we're very happy to see reoccupied, uh, it works very well. It worked very well for us and was easy for us to administer when we did it with WCH molding. In this case, Plastalini is very attractive to us because it reinforces industries that are already in the industrial park. Also, a lot of the food industry, as we went through the recession and then the complications of the pandemic, we were enormously pleased with how resistant they were to adverse economic conditions. In this case with Plastalini, uh, you're bringing a world-class manufacturer to Washington courthouse, and we're, we're very pleased with that. It really, in the long term, I, I think is a very good thing for the community and very proud that we were able to give council the option. Now, in anything like this, there's always a variety of opinions that we sincerely respect, and we understand that it's a complicated and difficult issue. And if we lived in a world in which tax incentives didn't exist for businesses at all, you could make an argument that that would be better for society, but uh, you know, we live in the world the way it is. And the Plastalini folks have been wonderful to work with, and we're very pleased with that option.
Can I ask you a question? What, what did they make, Joe?
Food packaging.
Food packaging? Okay.
Which, you know, in the industrial park now, you have food processors and then people that do printing out of Wingate Packaging, and now you've got all the, what I think of as the plastic part of food packaging with Plastalini. So we're very happy with that. Would like to reinforce in support ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty-one. That allows us to join a special district that will be the governing entity for the squad. You know, we talked with the county about this for a long time. We were very pleased with the county's actions in heading in this direction. A brief history of the squad in Washington courthouse, that is something that started out many, many years ago, basically funeral directors in town. Then it evolved, and this is a compressed, simplified history. Ironically, it's the Rotary Club that operated the ambulance service for many years. And that then evolved, as time went on, into sort of a quasi-department of the county. And over the years, we have kicked that organization around in terms of how we, the, the structure of it, and it's, who's responsible for it, and how we approach that. And you have a number of incredibly dedicated employees that deserve a solid governing structure that resolves this issue that allows that to function properly as opposed to, to every few years when we have a problem, we, we, we band-aid it and, and we shove it around. Those folks that go out and do that job with the squad, they deserve their respect, that it has a proper structure to it. And that is something that I, I very passionately believe in and hope that we continue to march along with in a positive way. If you have bagged leaves, which I'd be surprised if we might have bagged leaves quite yet, but here shortly you will, you call the service department, six three six, twenty-three eighty, put your bag leaves up front, and we will come along and we will take care of them. Loose leaves, that happens later, okay? You do not have to call the service department for loose leaves. We will make two passes through the community when we have sufficiently fallen. You pile them up front, you take the big truck and, and we vacuum them up, haul them away, get rid of them that way. We'll make two passes through the community and then see if we, we missed anything and do a little touch-up work there. You know, this year, we've had unusually warm weather. Unfortunately, that will eventually end, because in the committee, we talked about how, you know, we got plenty of salt, and we're making sure that all the snow piles are ready to go. But for right now, you only call service if you have bagged leaves, okay? The mural dedication. Would like to thank the mural committee, and in particular, I wanted to again reinforce and talk about the Kyger family. They very graciously cooperated with the painting of the mural on the side of the building. A law firm like Kyger is a small business in Washington courthouse. It, it is not, you know, something with three hundred lawyers and a great big tower building. It's a small family business. In various, a lot of small family businesses have problems when it's time to negotiate that generational transition. And Kyger Law has done that exceptionally well, and they have done it at the same time while instilling a tremendous sense of responsibility to the community. And I cannot thank them enough for what they allowed us to do down, what they allowed the mural committee to do down the street, and the results are something that I'm incredibly proud of. Would like to remind everybody, and we'll talk with the newspaper about making this something in big print. Trick or Treat or Beggars Night, depending on which label you prefer, is Thursday, October the twenty-eighth, between the hours of six and eight. Here pretty soon, we're just going to start answering the phone at the city building. Beggars Night is Thursday, October the twenty-eighth, between the hours of six and eight. Because we're running into the time of year where that will be what nine out of ten phone calls are about. So we will persuade our folks in the media and on the radio station and the Facebook world to remind everybody about when Beggars Night is. You need to stay safe, and young children need to be supervised, okay? If they're little ghosts and goblins, mom, dad, grandma, aunt, uncle, somebody like that, needs to go out with them at night. Drivers need to drive a little bit slower. If your child is ill, okay? If they are showing flulike symptoms, please keep them at home. If you have flulike symptoms, please think about, you know, maybe it's not the best idea to hand out candy, okay? But that's a decision for everybody to make, but please think about that and, and use some common sense there. And please, it's incredibly important that you supervise those kids. They're excited. It's getting dark at that time of year. And, you know, we want to have a safe, fun, happy uh, Halloween event. Would like to thank two more, uh, one person and then a group. That car show last weekend. Tyler Kelly has been the, the push behind that. Would like to thank him. It's an incredibly nice event for downtown. We get a lot of people out. And, you know, the weather's cooperated enormously, but we get excellent attendance at those, and it's been incredibly nice. And along with that, I'd like to thank the street department, because when you do shop hop or you do an event like the car show downtown, uh, you know, they, they put in a solid week of work, and a lot of work with street, uh, it's physical work. You know, we cut down trees, we, we do a lot of physical labor, but at the end of the week, you know, those folks are tired. But they have dutifully enjoyed helping out with those events, and that is something that, that I deeply appreciate. That's everything I've got to talk about tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Denon?
I do have a comment, Mr. Chair. It was interesting tonight, for the first time, I found out that the incentive of refunding the, or re, reimbursing the city income tax back to a company, this is not the first time it's been used.
No, the first time was WCH molding.
Yeah, I did.
And, and that's why I believe at one point, there's a reference to amending an existing ordinance, if my memory is correct, in the legislation.
So it will be something going forward? Any factories or companies we're trying to bring into the city, this will be an incentive that we offer to them?
You know, you have to make the incentive work with the needs of the employer. At any time, though, any time that we do that, that will always be something that council has to vote on. Okay, it's not, this is the program, and we can do this with anybody. Each time, there'll have to be an agreement with the employer and then a piece of legislation that, that you vote on.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Director of Finance, I didn't see Mr. Riley in the house, so I'm going to skip on to Mr. Pittsick, city attorney.
The only thing I have is that over the last twenty months, the court caseload has. The only thing I have is that over the last twenty months, the court case load has gone down substantially. In the last month, we've seen an increase of about forty-five to fifty percent in a number of cases. Specifically relating to traffic cases from the state of Miami-Dade Patrol. So I, we're getting increased fines, so that's, that's a good thing. At least we're on.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, local residents and taxpayers, Mrs. Susan Cadwalader. Please step up and give us your name and address and have at it.
Susan Cadwalader, ten forty Damon Drive, Washington Courthouse, Ohio.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm here to discuss flags. But I would like to bring something else before council. When they had the rally this summer where they rode through town with all the trucks and everything, my husband and I, not knowing this was going on, we were coming back from Columbus from a doctor's appointment, got caught up in that at Sa- in front of Save-A-Lot. We're just trying to get home. We got stopped at the red light at Kroger's and attempted to turn left on forty-one South to go home. And we were, we had the green light and the arrow and a whole bunch of motorcycles came out from Leesburg Avenue and had I not pulled in front of oncoming traffic, we would have had a major accident. And I, this haunts me to this day because while we were traveling in amongst all those people, I did not see one police officer. And I would hope, I know how much police presence, I use that word, police presence makes a difference. That in the future, if there's something like that, that we see more police presence, so that we absolutely would have been in an accident, okay? The, so that we see more police presence, um, if something like that is going on again. And I'm here to discuss flags tonight. I don't know if anybody realizes, the Trump flags have been for sale out by the marathon on forty-one and also on sixty-two out there. And while that is okay, I was sickened to see the flag at the top saying F U C K Biden. And I don't know if the city allows this or if we are protected morally. This was directed more at Mr. Pitstick. Do we have a right or is it freedom of speech that takes over then and these people are allowed to sell things that are so disgusting to me? You know, I want, I live here and I want this community to have a good image. And I don't want to see things like that being sold right out on the street.
I don't disagree with you, but I, was it the last meeting that came up?
Two meetings ago.
And it's, it's Second Amendment, there's not much we can do with it.
First Amendment.
Or First Amendment. See how well I'm, I must not have taken history.
Governor, you can join our class.
My twenty-five points.
You're not the first one to complain. It's been brought to our attention.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's fine.
I just saw it.
Yeah.
And I just was so upset by it.
Me too.
I couldn't believe it. And there's nothing the city can do to stop it?
I even brought up the point that is it, are we getting into the area of obscenity? You know, because that could be obscenity, I would think.
That's what I thought too.
According to the law, it's free speech. I mean, I, I, I don't understand it either. But it looks like to me it's leaning towards obscenity.
It's what I felt.
You had that, you'd have to do something about it. I mean, one of it was images of something. It's the same, is that free speech? I don't know, you know?
That's why I was directing this to Mr. Pitstick.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Because I don't know, you know.
We've been discussing, we've been having this, had discussions about this.
I just was sickened when I saw it.
You're right.
And I didn't look at the other flags. I don't know if any of those were offensive or if it was just the one. And I.
There's several of them around town. I can tell that.
Mrs. Cadwalader, is that correct? Cadwalader?
Me?
Yeah, is that it?
Cadwalader.
Cadwalader?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I wanted to make sure that I said your name right. The Supreme Court has differentiated between vulgar language and explicit images. Explicit images are, uh, less protected, but vulgar words even. They've said, uh, you know, as bad they, as they are, uh, in their words are, one man's vulgarity is another man's lyric. And, uh, that's why it's covered in, in free speech. And so if we were to do anything about it, we would get sued, uh, as a city. So it is protected.
Well, at what point are we allowed to protect the morality of this community?
Whatever it gets to explicit things and not vulgar things is where the, the Supreme Court has drawn the line.
I'm not sure I know exactly where you're referring to. Anyway, I didn't see that in the paper I've been moving and so I missed that, if it was in the paper and so I'm just very sad.
Yeah.
I'm more sad than anything over that, so.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Mr. Crispin, can I be permitted to ask Mr. Pitstick a question?
Sure.
Council discussed before that the display of a flag like that, if somebody wants to, to buy them and display them on their, their house, that, that, that's protected speech.
Right.
The nature of what Susan described was a group of, we'll call it itinerant people selling the flags in question, which could be a zoning violation. Could it not?
I don't know that it would be a zoning violation if they have a right to sell, uh, anything in their particular stores. I don't have a clue, but the facts.
What she's describing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, is that somebody's just set up in somebody's parking lot randomly.
That may be a zoning issue. It may not be a zoning issue.
The one was set up in front by Sherwin-Williams in a parking lot out there. The other one was at the V where Young Street is. I was just sickened. I couldn't believe we couldn't do something to stop that.
I think, Mrs. Cadwalader, I can tell you, at least from our discussion before, that it doesn't make any difference what council members' political leadings are. Nobody liked those of the council members.
Well, I feel the same way too.
We were just unable to do anything about it. But in the discussion, again, I, it wasn't a political thing for council. It was, we didn't like that. But at the same time, our hands are tied and it's one of the frustrating things for us too.
Well, I think we can all agree that it's disgusting. The, the question is, uh, we live in a country which allows a diverse viewpoint of things that, uh, we may not like. And, uh, I agree that I don't like those particular flags. But they, they are allowed under our constitution and we have to respect the fact that, uh, this, these individuals have the right to display those flags on their personal property.
This is not displaying on their personal property.
I, I understand.
It's to sell them right out along the road.
I, I understand that. But where they were selling at, whether it was a, uh, whether it was a zoning issue or not, they are not licensed to be there and fall on a long-term basis. These people come in, they go out. It's like selling tomatoes. And I hate to make that analogy, but it's the same kind of deal. Do we, we want to, uh, do something with, with that, uh, to sell those? I sure would. But I don't see how we can legally do that.
On the other point, was the rally, did, did they get a parade permit or, or of some kind, any sort of, uh, advance notice with the city?
You know what Susan's describing, I don't believe so, no.
See now, isn't that something that we could have been able to do?
Well, yeah, I think that it's kind of a spontaneous, uh, weekend event that was just advertised, I believe, on some, on, on Facebook.
Yeah.
We didn't even know what was going to happen or not. She said, well, she didn't like the fact that there was no police presence. Well, the police may not have known that they were going to be there. I, I, I don't know. And we would have, we would have had to have, uh, extra police officers brought in for the event had we known about it.
If I, if I remember correctly, uh, and perhaps I am wrong, but I do think that we knew about that. But wasn't there something about, uh, we didn't want to have any sort of, uh, there was also going to be counter protesters to that and we didn't want to have any inflammatory interactions because of the, uh, potential, um, I guess backlash against the police that.
You, you may be right. I don't remember exactly the circumstance surrounding. There, there were several of these events that took place over a period of months, so I don't remember.
Without a permit, I would agree. Them cutting you off in the road, them not paying attention.
Not appropriate.
They were riding red lights.
They should not be permitted to do that.
Somehow or another, it's like when I'm on the freeway and on the side of a heavy foot. But if I see a patrolman on the side of the road, my, my foot gets lighter. And so I just always say, oh, police presence can make a, a big difference, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm really glad my students are getting to hear this discussion. Because, Gang, can I tell you, in the last few years, things have changed dramatically. I don't care what political party you were in the past, you would have never seen signs like this, ever. And so things have changed and I keep preaching to them that I hope their generation can somehow turn around what is going on now in our society. And I am, I'm like you, I am so disappointed. And what's even more disappointing is we can't do anything about it.
Which I can understand if we can't protect our community from what I see as immoral. You know, because I mean, I know we can't, we can't make you a moral person. We can't change your values and yet you want to protect your community. I know Good Hope has a bad reputation right now, has had for months. There's a man over there flying one of those on, off of his front porch. And people have been talking about it for months and when I saw them actually selling that, I had here in Washington Courthouse, two, two main entrances in this community, I just felt sickened. I, I, if, if it was on somebody's front porch, I don't think it would bother me as much as openly selling it. That's what really distressed me, that they, that the city could not find that in some way.
You know, in the future, if we see someone selling something like that along the road or along the street, is it appropriate? Could a police officer buy and ask for his permit? Do you have a permit? Is, is that appropriate? That would, would be stepping on any laws.
I don't know that we have any permitting, uh, available for those, those issues. Because it's just, it would be the same thing as selling tomatoes or.
I see what you mean.
They're peddlers, they do.
They're peddlers, yeah, that's true. They're coming, going.
They move, they move, they move.
They come and go very quickly.
I have people come in my store all the time that are selling stuff and that I don't want necessarily and.
But if you had someone going around town from door to door soliciting something, you could say, where's your permit?
Yes.
I see, that's different.
Different.
Than somebody just setting up, selling obscenity along our streets. So how can that be different? I don't know, I guess.
But here, here's, here's where we got to look at it.
Two different rulings.
Whoever's property they're on, they probably got permission from the property owner.
Well, yes, they.
So that's where, I mean, the press, I would never allow somebody to stand outside my front door and sell something like that. So, you know what I mean? That, that's where the conversation from citizen to citizen could happen.
We also have to be careful as a city, because if we only send people to check on these places that have vulgarities that we don't like and we don't have police presence at a tomato stand, people will keep track of that. And then suddenly, we will be thrown into a lawsuit because we are only doing that to speed activities.
We'd be targeting, yes, I understand.
That's horrible that we can't protect this community.
Additionally, Mr. Schultz, we've always used the permission of the property owner when it came to the sort of itinerant seller.
Right.
You know, if the property owner didn't want them there, we told them, you know, you need to move off.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
But if they were not actually on, uh, you said the paint store, didn't you, Susan? That's where they were out there.
That's where one was in the parking lot beside a Sherwin-Williams.
Okay, but beside there, the owner of that is in Columbus.
So he probably didn't get permission.
Out there, that beauty shop hadn't been there on the point for years. So there's nobody there to even place their own property.
Is there, the Appleney there, is that where the cat company is?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I don't know.
That's where they park their vehicle.
I don't know.
It's just a sad day because you have to wonder, you know, if this continues, then, then we're faced with the reality that there's nothing we can do.
Well, unfortunately, our hands are tied.
I think it's conversations among citizens. I mean, that's my opinion. My little boy asked me when he saw it, Mom, why is that allowed? He's eleven years old. He knows he's not allowed to say that word. It's just not accepted. And he doesn't understand it. But a conversation of educating him and explaining, um, and I think that if we are having conversations with neighbors and, you know, hopefully you follow the majority and those conversations continue.
Well, there's a complete lack of respect. I think there you go. Talk about this in council for, for many months now. There is no respect for, for individuals or families anymore.
Right.
Or your neighbors.
Or your neighbors.
Right.
Or, or other citizens within the community.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks for your comments, Susan. Good to see you again. And move on into legislation previously introduced, ordinance number twelve twenty twenty-one, first, third reason, I'm sorry.
I'll replace ordinance number twelve twenty twenty-one on third reason.
Second, Deb.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I've one, just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I've been in favor of this all along and I guess I was kind of surprised to see the amount of work that's already been done on that facility and we haven't even passed it yet. That's the only thing that I was really, uh, surprised about.
And I, Jim, I've also, Mr. Hawk and I talked.
Right.
And I've given thought to it. I do think, and I think Mr. Denon brought this up. Communities are doing these kind of things to get businesses and jobs. And if no community did it, it'd be great. But they are. And so, yeah, are there some issues? I think with it there are. But I still think in the long run, it's a positive for our community. And one of the main reasons is, it's not just jobs, it's jobs that are going to be purely good-paying jobs that you can actually live on. And so, and it does go away after a while.
Well, and we tied, we tied the incentive of them living in our community by the, the company Plastelini's giving X amount of dollars back and encouraging people to live here. That's huge. You're talking educated, well-paying jobs. That's good for our community.
But I do agree too that there are some problems with some things they've done and so on. But I still think in the long run, overall, overall, it's a plus for the community.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawk?
No.
Crispin?
Yes.
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-one and ordinance approving and authorizing. Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a job creation incentive with Placelini Incorporated, and authorizing and approving related matters.
Move for passage.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
No.
Chrisman.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-one, first, I'm about to Dr. Turner to say first. Second reading, Dale keep me straight.
Okay.
I'll move that we place the ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-one on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance authorizing the creation of a joint ambulance district with Fayette County, including the township and municipal corporations therein, and adopting all resolutions and ordinances pertinent thereto for the creation thereof.
Thank you. Moving into new legislation in writing, ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-one, first reading. I got it that right that time.
I'll move and place ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance renewing the service contract of Joseph J. Denon for the position of city manager for the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio.
Item B, resolution number R thirty-four, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R thirty-four, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing, oh, I forgot. Resolution authorizing, oh, did I read the wrong one last time?
No.
You're doing it.
Okay. A resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio, referencing Pid number one one two six seven six for lighting optimization along a portion of U S thirty-five within the City of Washington Courthouse.
Thank you. C, resolution number R thirty-five, twenty twenty-one.
Is there discussion on this?
Which one?
One with the lighting, is that what we're?
So R thirty-four, twenty twenty-one, is that one you're referring to? Did you ask for a discussion?
Yeah.
I thought I did, maybe.
Yep, you did.
You did?
Mm-hmm, you did.
See, McKenna keeps me straight. She doesn't read it till I ask her. I blame her. I'm pretty sure I did.
I just wanted to ask a question where this is.
Do we renew this every year or two? Is it the same area thirty-five?
We do renew it every, we have to renew it every couple of years.
You had a question, Ted?
Yes, I just wondered where this is.
The section of thirty-five that's in town. Ted, and we went over it in committee. We'll get you a map to show you. If that'll work for you.
It's already there, right?
No, I just like to know where it's at.
Yeah.
Where?
No, I say it's already theirs.
I'll get you a map that shows you the whole, the area.
It's just renewing it, renewing it every couple of years. It's already lighting that's existent.
I know our town, I just wondered where it is.
I'll get you a map that shows you the whole area that includes that particular project.
Are you talking about U S thirty-five, the interstate part?
Yeah.
Is that where it crosses at Walmart?
That would be part of it, yeah.
Well, I'm just curious as to where all, where all it includes. I'm not against it or anything, I just.
I know, Ted, off the top of my head, I can't think of what sections of thirty-five in town. I'll have to get the map out, and I'll get that for you, Ted.
C, resolution number R thirty-five, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R thirty-five, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-five dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Ron Sockman to the District Fifteen Public Works Integrating Committee for the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Item D, resolution number R thirty-six, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R thirty-six, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Not on this particular, but just briefly, when we have guests like the, your students, Dale, do they get a copy of this so they know what we're really talking about when we?
Out there.
There's, yeah, there's copies out there, I don't.
Did any of you kids get a copy, did you?
I think that they walk past them typically.
Okay. It'd be nice to pass them out so they know.
But I got a question. Did it say in the
Yeah.
minutes of the committee, three point three?
Yes, I was gonna ask the same question, you're right, it does.
What's the difference?
We cut it down to make it three even, because the point three doesn't make a whole difference.
Because you're right, I read that too.
Okay.
We have two different copies of. This is the updated. Which one's out there on the chair?
The updated.
The updated, the amended agenda, Ted.
Just pick one up and you leave. Everybody just gives you an idea there.
Well, I think that we went through them all, but that.
Yes, after the fact.
Jim, in answer to your question about the students getting one, I think I was on council the better part of a year before I understood it. I'm sitting there, of course, the other members would breeze through it, I'm sitting there going, what?
Resolutions and, and ordinances and how many times.
Yeah, okay.
It's confusing.
Any discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, or his designated to convey three acres to the Fayette County Community Society.
Thank you. Ms. Alenas, Mr. Johnson.
Um, thank you to, uh, to Susan and students for showing up today and, uh, participating, listening, uh, and, uh, oh, is it McConnell?
She kicked out.
McConnell, yeah. Thank you as well for coming. I know she's here as well. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you to them, Mr. Chairman, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hawk.
Okay, I, I voted for, uh, rehiring our city manager. And I did that with sincerity. Uh, there is, there's a couple of requests that I asked of you, Joe.
Okay.
I meant to do that in discussion, but I was looking at the wrong copy of the ordinances. We had a shared one, but I didn't have one given to me personally. The one that was mailed to me was in a different order. But, um, I, I would just ask that there would be a little more transparency with the city council. I know that we as a city council shouldn't micromanage you. When we hire you, we trust you to, to take care of the affairs of the city and, and do it. But there's been a couple of things in the, in this last term that some of us didn't know about that we wished we had have known about when it happened. And, um, one of them is on personnel issues, but the one that, and I've said a lot about Placeline, and so that's why I didn't make much discussion on it tonight, but, um, the fact that I don't think we really have to do this to, to give them an incentive, the thing's way up in the air already, and we haven't even passed this yet. So I think it's almost backwards, and I, I just wish there'd have been more transparency. Even the newspaper didn't give the details of this. And I think it's important because as council members, some of the things that we depend on are the feedback that we get from citizens. That's why we have three readings. On the first reading, you know, that we vote a certain way if we agree or disagree. And then there's two more readings, and then a final passage. And I think it's, it's good that the citizens have all the details, especially something as, as important as, as a hundred percent of the taxes being given back to the company that are taken from employees. And I, I just think that I'd like to see more of that to us personally before things, uh, progress, so that we know exactly what's going on, so. Um, I, I really think that the city has done well under your administration. And, um, ninety-nine, probably ninety-nine percent is in favor of how you do things, but that's one thing that I ask to be done. Another thing that I would ask you to do is, uh, every once in a while you see, uh, somebody has fixed up their property, and it looks nice. I think it would be good if we had some way of recognizing people when they, uh, do a good job of fixing their yard up or their house or so on, and it's tastefully done. I think they should be complimented on it. I'm not necessarily asking to give awards because sometimes you might leave somebody off, but just a, just a compliment from the city, just to, an encouragement to do this kind of thing. So, that's all.
Joe, have we tried to implement that before? And it kind of fell by the wayside every time or two?
Uh, council for a while had a committee where they came up with different people to recognize, and they did that for a while, but, uh, that, yeah, it typically.
Somebody's always gonna feel slighted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But no, I'm happy to come up with people that have invested in their, their property and cleaned it up, because we work with a lot of people with that deal now. You know, what I would think that we would do with that is point out some people that, that, you know, where they've made a real improvement in a neighborhood. So it may not be necessarily the ones that you think of on the, the main drag of town, that they've done a wonderful job with this. Uh, it, you know, it may be somebody on, on a side street that, that you don't see all that often, where we've noticed that, that we've made a huge improvement.
Yeah.
That would be great, but then if people keep theirs nice for years, how are they gonna feel? Yeah, that guy had trash for ten years. I've kept mine clean for ten years, and all of a sudden, he's a hero. I would be offended if that happened, personally. It's not a whole big deal, because I don't care, I don't pay attention to neighbors. I speak to them, that's it. Anyway, is anything else, Ted?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Um, you know, Susan, I want to thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate then your comments. Those are great comments. Thank you very much. Mr. McDonald, thank you for showing up, and all you students, thank you for being there, so, that's a great thing. You know, I spoke to, uh, along with the school thing, I spoke to the, um, Mr. Bailey here a few nights ago about a situation that's going on around town at the bus stops. It seems like these kids are getting off the bus, and you see these masks laying all over the street. And if you look to where they're laying at, you trail it back, it's from the bus stops. Most of them are, are from the bus stops. And there's tons of them. They're on Dayton Avenue and, and Mulberry. There were tons of them. So I spoke to Mr. Bailey, do you have on the buses, a trash can, a box, something that the driver says, if you're not, don't throw the mask away, put it here in the box when you get off the bus? As they get off the bus, they throw it away, not on the streets. That is just something I thought about, and I spoke to Mr. Bailey about it. So he said he would mention it to his, to the principals and to the teachers, because you see these things all over town, and it's getting to be a problem. They're gonna plug up and clog up all our drains eventually, our sewer drains and everything, so it's gonna be a problem. And animals get caught in these little strings and things, so it's gonna be a problem. So we have to figure out a way to kind of stop this a little bit, and it starts with the bus stops, I think. The other thing, I'm not a quote giver, so don't get me started on every week, I'm not gonna do that. But Mr. Lynch said something about change. We've all changed over the last couple of years. And a person said, and I'll tell you who the person was here in just a moment, the measure of intelligence is the ability to change. You know who said that? Albert Einstein. The ability, the measurement of intelligence is the ability to change. I'm, Albert Einstein said that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Blair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, uh, welcome all the esteemed guests that we had tonight. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. John McDonald, who's one of the writing candidates for city council here tonight. Good to have you here tonight, sir. And, um, I'd also like to thank the, uh, organizers of the Classical Chamber Music Concert last night at the Presbyterian Church. For a town our size, the turnout was disappointing. Wasn't been for the kids, a lot of the kids from, uh, the business class there, we'd have really been disappointed. But we talk about a lot in the community, there's a place to go and nothing to do. And when we do offer something, unfortunately, the turnout is, is very small, which tends not to attract, uh, other promoters that want to do these things. But it was a very good concert, uh, anybody else that went. And then this must be quotation night, Mr. Schultz there. I don't know if Dale's got one for us or not, but, uh, this one comes from Dr. Shad Helmstetler. I've read several of his books on, uh, self-talk. And he's, he said something that really stood out to me. Says, "There is no greater path you can walk, no greater good you can achieve, and no greater purpose you can find than to live up to the promise you were born to fulfill." That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Blair, if you're going to mention people running for city council, are you gonna mention everybody?
Just the ones that's here.
Well, there's several here that are running for city council. I don't appreciate using city council meetings for politics. Anyway, I do have a quote. "The best leaders have a high consideration factor. They really care about their people." Brian Tracy said that. And I think I was going to say something else about some personal comments that were made about me at the last meeting, but I think I won't. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
I'm just gonna end it on an upbeat, light moment here. Um, never, we just had our shop hop. I wasn't able, my store wasn't able to participate because we had some COVID passing around, but, um, so we're limited on staff, but the next one is November twelfth. And that's usually, for most of the businesses, they're open house for Christmas, which is gonna get us in the season. And so I encourage people to maybe put that on their calendar. We're all very busy, I know, and trying to be here and there and everywhere. But I think that's a good time to try to get us in the mood for a holiday season that we don't know what it's gonna be like. But hopefully, it'll be a positive one for everyone. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, I apologize for you for letting that go on, but it came on very quickly. I didn't approve of it either.
Well, you know, gentlemen, you both have said political things in these meetings involving the virus. Mr. Johnson was very clear with his last, uh, comments last time about making it political. It's not being made political by the average American, but it's being made by a certain party. And there's been other comments, Mr. Chairman, you've made fun of our. Uh, and there's been other comments, Mr. Chairman, you've made fun of our ex-president, Mr. Orange Hair and so forth, which I did not appreciate.
I did not say that, Mr. Orange Hair.
Yes, you have.
I did not.
We could find out.
Well, you can, but I did not.
Yes, you have.
And since you've spoken to me.
Sure.
I have here the exact quotes that I talked about. There is not one, uh, political quote. All I talked about was people being considerate of other people. He talked about politics, he mentioned every Democrat there was. He's the one that talked about law. I talked about being kind to people, if you want to read it, there's every quote.
No, I've read it all, but you, you said it's making, you're tired of it being made political. You didn't make that comment.
I, I said nothing political.
You said you're tired of it being made a political issue.
That's true.
Well, now you're saying you didn't.
No, I didn't say that, I said there was nothing political that I said, I said I was tired of it being made political. But I was talking about human kindness, uh, whatever, it don't matter. That's all.
Thank all you students for coming, thank you, Susan, for your, uh, input. Everybody up here feels the way you feel, but our hands are tied. At least at this point, I don't see it changing in the near future. That's probably enough. How about a motion to adjourn?
That makes.
I'll second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes, thank you, McKenna, you did a good job.
Yeah.
You had a good teacher, I'll tell you that.